Good evening, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Sessions from May 26, 2021. Do I have a motion to?
Yes, pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move the board to meet in a closed session to consider matters that relate to negotiations and to perform an administrative function.
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it for a. Thank you, we'll be back at 5 o'clock. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education from May 26, 21. Can we have open thing and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, you've had a chance to look at the minutes for May 9th, both open and closed. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve open and closed meeting minutes for May 19, 2021.
Second.
Motion and second, do I have any discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jane, you're on budget workshop.
Afternoon, what we'd like to bring before you is draft scenario number 12 to review. Since we met the last time, we have the county certified maintenance of effort number from the state, the state is number from county maintenance of effort is 62,559,389. This has been, the certification has been sent over to the county to review too as well.
And I think we've been in agreement with the county that if those, when those numbers came in and they're certified and looked at, then they would agree to that number.
Right, correct, so the change is using that three-year average, so using the 17, 18, and 19's number as far as enrollment. So updating that, if we look at scenario 12, we're still in the deficit of 1,855,581 to bridge the gap there. And this is looking at a placeholder for salaries listed there.
So, we're, in this scenario, we're still a million eighty-five short.
Yes.
The balance is budget. You currently using a fund balance of 330.
Yes.
And Tammy's brought up the concern about other state, other sources, non-public placements and increases of 450.
The tuition and building use.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, 440.
Dick, I still had a question about the furlough day, you said that that was take, put back in.
We have to add that back into 22.
Right, but I was thinking that, that Dick, you had said that had been...
Last year, to balance our budget, we did a furlough day.
Right.
Took one day away from everybody. They physically, or financially, they did not lose that because they were in training for schoolology, I think it was?
We paid them for training for a day and paid them from a grant.
From a grant, so the teachers and staff did not lose that money last year, but it was out of our budget through, and it was grant funded for one day. That means we have to put it back in this year to make it for 189, I think, is our agreement?
270. 270, need to bring it back.
No, but I'm talking about, we have 180 days in school and nine professional days to get to 189, you know, if we didn't have it back, we'd be at 188. So, the staff did not lose money last year because of the grant and, but we've got to get it back in, so, you know, it's, we robbed Peter to pay Paul last year, and now we're paying it back this year, it's got to be put back in. Or, you know, we do another furlough day this year, or two, we'd save that much money, but then you're that much behind next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, this evening, I believe we were going to look at the five-year expenditures.
Could I ask real quick, do we have a revision on the budget request from the schools and the departments? Do we have an updated version of that, or is it, the 253 is?
The 253, we don't have an updated on request, the initial request was 806,000.
Correct.
835, and then it was reduced down to 253, 253,160.
Okay.
But that's what you approved.
Okay.
And out of that amount, the 253,160, it's 20,000 for an assistant at Centerville Elementary, 85,000 for a gateway teacher at Southernville Middle, 85,000 for the drug and alcohol prevention instructor, a PD for grades four and five math at 5,160, licenses for Adobe and the cloud for CTE, 15,000, licenses for Discovery and TechBook at 17,000. They're shredding in all buildings, those containers, they have a professional company come in at 6,000, a travel tracker and athletic trips for students, to track the students at 8,000, and then the annual support increases for all our technology contracts at 12,000.
That's on page one in our budget book.
Right, right. It might be something we have to look at?
Mm-hmm, yes, I would like to look at a few of those.
Okay. One item I'd like to bring to your attention, if we look at the five-year comparison and we go to page three, just a thought, if we look at line 18 or seven, the budget amount for tutoring is 156,500.
Are you on the page three of our five-year comparison?
Correct, for expenditures. So, we have 156,500 there for tutoring. What's coming down for the blueprint fund is going to be an additional 599,000 for tutoring. So, was wondering if this was a cost savings, but with the idea or the understanding that within a couple of years, this would have to be added back in, but it could be a savings that we could recognize now.
The 151?
156, the budgeted amount, because it's been averaging 151, yes. And we do have TSI money too in addition to that, and that is actually tutoring for kindergarten through second grade as well, I think 133,000.
So, you're suggesting that this would come from?
That this will come from blueprint funds?
Okay.
Restricted funds?
How much are they?
For the supplemental tutoring, it's around 599,000, and for TSI, it's around 133,000.
And can that be used over more than one year?
Correct, up to two years.
So, that would buy us two years.
Correct.
And that would be enough money in that to cover that for two years, and then we'd have a shortfall in two years.
And then, we're hearing about additional money that can come down for tutoring too from the state, but we're waiting to receive that or two.
So, that'd be 156.
It's a thought there on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're looking at a million-dollar deficit.
Since the retirement savings, initially, we had nine, and speaking with Ms. Bassett, went up to 16, so we'll realize some savings there, depending upon where they fall on the scale.
How much you need that to add up to, just rough?
I would say conservatively around 40,000.
Adding 40,000 to this number here?
So, we're, I'm figuring we got 156 saving on tutoring, 40 there, we're now at 196.
And then a reminder, the reduction in two positions that you see under this, on the right-hand side of the scenario number 12, this includes the reduction of the communications specialist as well as the maintenance coordinator position.
Maintenance coordinator, that's in Carla's?
It was a retiree a couple of years ago, that the position was never filled.
We had a maintenance coordinator and we have facilities coordinator, there was two separate, and at one time Carla was the, excuse me, Ms. Poland was the facilities coordinator, we never replaced Tony Schultz.
Correct, so that would be removing.
So, that's two different positions.
Correct.
Maintenance coordinator and the facilities coordinator, two different positions, so we still have a facilities coordinator?
Correct, this would be removing the retiree position.
Okay.
So, that's already in the budget, that's the savings of?
It's incorporating at 312,000.
And what you're telling us now is that that could go up 40,000 by, a little bit few more retirements.
Because of the retirements, correct. And with the, on the left-hand side, going back to the state aid number, the state aid draft figures are still draft, they're not final, we're anticipating another 100,000 increase at minimum?
Increase, that's a 32,600.
Correct.
Date aid could go, I'm sorry.
Date aid could go up about 100,000.
That, I believe, is all the changes that I had on my radar. If you have anything you'd like me to review or go over, do we go over this, Dr. Kane?
I think it's important to do that, just so that board members can see that there is a plan for the rest of the dollars.
Okay.
That need to bridge the gap.
Okay.
That's a sheet.
Yes, correct, so in front of you is a schedule of estimated revenue, expenses, and encumbrances. It's taking what is budgeted for fiscal year '21, comparing it to actual, projecting out additional expenditures and revenue, and seeing if there's any variances. The top section is going to be your projected revenue for the four major funding sources, Queen Anne's County Government, the State of Maryland, the federal government, and then other resources. As you can see, we're on track for the first couple items. The ones that we are seeing a deficit of in revenue is other resources or other sources of 485,000, and underneath, under notes, you can see that the deficit is going to be from the fund balance of, we would not need the 200,000 that was budgeted, so we go ahead and remove that. The retiree, drug subsidiary, it came in, and the budget amount was 135,000, it came in at 85, so we have a 60,000 loss in revenue we have to account for. The building use fees, we see a decrease projected at 170, tuition a decrease of 15,000, and then other resources there that make up the negative variance in revenue, so a decrease in what we're anticipating to receive in revenue. The next section is your major categories that you have, the current budget amount, expenditures to date, projected expenditures, May through June, and then your total projected, adding your year-to-date plus projected to give a variance. This is very conservative estimates, it's assuming that a lot of these balances will be spent out by end of the year. What we're noticing currently is savings under instructional salary of 455,000, we're seeing savings under special ed at 180, pupil personnel at 25, health services at 10, transportation at 90, operations at 125, maintenance at 90, and then your fixed charges at 575. So, here, the projected variances, we're seeing a decrease in expenditures, and this is due to COVID, because the savings that we're seeing is definitely an anomaly, this has been a difficult year or unprecedented year. So, we're looking at savings about 1.5 from expenditures for this year.
And you would anticipate that to go up next year, seeing if we go have a full school year, we won't see that huge variances under each category.
Correct.
Like, we save an instructional salary, a lot of that substitutes.
Correct, majority.
And the information you sent me one time, you know, we've, in 2016, spent 485,000 substitutes, in 2019 was pre-COVID, the last year was 569,000. I mean, that's, in those years, it was 3.3, 3.3, and then last year, from '18 to '19, was 9.9% increase in substitutes, which personally, I think are probably underpaid. I mean, they aren't paid at a high level to teach, being a student. How do we lower our substitutes, I mean, not to have a demand for substitutes, any ways to, outside the box, that we could lower substitute, not, I mean, we need them because we got to have somebody in the classroom, but it's certainly getting to be a major expense.
This might be a suggestion, I'm hearing other counties actually have substitutes assigned to the building, and that, let's say you're allotted two substitutes, and that's what you have to make work, I don't know if you've heard it in other districts or not, Dr. Kane?
I've had that in each district that I've worked in except here, so they're called permanent substitutes, and on days, if there's ever not a need for a substitute, then they have assigned duties, they have things that they need to do on a schedule, permanent subs.
Because, I mean, I was just looking at how much money we were spending last year, divided by days, and yeah, I'm using $15 an hour as an average, you could say higher or lower, divided by days, 180 days, you know, we're hiring 35 substitutes a day, and if we had 13?
Yeah, right, at least. I mean, you've got 700 almost teachers.
Right.
So, that's not, that's not outrageous.
No, but I was trying to, you know, but I mean, when you start, you know, that 569,000 covers 35 subs a day, to me, if you had permanent subs, I kind of like that idea, because they'd happen and they'd have to just make it work or...
I can remember Bernie Sedusky, years and years ago, going crazy because the sub, he couldn't believe how many substitutes we have, and that was a long time ago. So, it's only, you know, increased over the years.
Wow, and you probably aren't going to do a whole lot of saving, because those permanent subs have benefits.
Understand.
And you're paying them every day, and it certainly won't be 35 over the 14 schools that you have.
No, no, you wouldn't have that many every day, but...
In the other districts, did they control, if they needed more, Dr. Kane, were they able to call in more, or how does that work?
You still had to use the sub system, because if I've got four permanent subs at my school and six people are out, I still have to use the sub system.
I don't know if that's the place where I'd be looking for savings, because I would like to propose that we pay our subs more. We're going to have them, they play a very important role. Every time we have gone to a school for our tour, without exception, they reference that they need subs, and certainly, you know, we've heard from parents whose kids at the high school are sitting in the cafeteria because, or the gym, because they don't have a sub, so they're not even getting any academics. So, I don't know if that's a place where I'd be looking for savings, I would like to increase their hourly.
I'm looking at not having to have as much requirements as subs, I mean, and I know when you have 600 or 700 teachers, people are out certain days, but, you know, you're not getting the same quality when the teacher's out, and I just, and then, I guess it's a profession, we probably know better or worse than anybody else, but, you know, when you're not there, students are missing out on their teacher.
This is true, however, I do want to clarify one thing, just for the public that's listening, for students who are in the auditorium or the cafeteria at some schools, because their teacher is at home and they're learning virtual, they're not in the cafeteria or auditorium doing nothing, they are getting instruction, and there are staff assigned to those areas to ensure that students are working. It's not, certainly not the same as if the teacher were there, but they're not doing nothing.
No, and this is unprecedented year, I mean, so, I mean, I can't judge things, it's just that when I look at a trend, and, you know, I know it's tough to find subs, it's like bus drivers, who, you know, somebody wants to work three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon, it ties your whole day up, so, you know, you, probably your substitute, because you don't want to commit to certain things, you want to have more freedom, but, you know, it just seems our trend is going up substantially. So, basically, you're telling us the savings this year might be a million five, rough?
A million and 65,000, correct.
But that's this year, with a lot of, with some of the big items, certainly going to change when we're 100% back in school next year.
Correct, correct. This is very conservative estimate, more than likely it'll go up, it's assuming that some funds are going to be completely spent out as well.
Right. Okay, any other board members have any questions, or do you have more to go with us?
You mean, questions just about the budget in general?
Well, I mean, we are far off on balancing our budget with our revenues and expenditures right now.
Do you want to talk about the summary box?
Okay. So, on the left-hand side, you can see our unrestricted fund balance, so your unrestricted fund balance is, fund balance that is carried forward, that is able to be assigned. So, we came into fiscal year '21 with a little over 2.3 million, with the projected revenue variance of a decrease, we have to take that into consideration of 485,000 less revenue received, we have a positive expenditure variance of 1.5, so for this year only, for '21, we're projected to see an increase in fund balance of a little over a million. If we take out the proposed fund balance, that's in scenario 12 of 330, we're looking at fund balance projection at the end of '21, a little over 3 million.
You know, and I, some people look at this like, okay, you have $3 million balance, why don't you spend it? The problem is, it's a non-recurring expenditure, you know, it's a recurring expenditure, but not recurring revenue, and certainly, that can be something we look at, because I think we're looking at 330 already, but, you know, as we've talked about before, this is a, it is a slippery slope that we've gone down over the last few years, and it's got to be done with great caution.
I don't know if it's going to take a line item going through or not, but I was really interested in bringing these subs up to $16, and I know that you worked up the numbers, and I appreciate it very much from you and Dr. Kane, which was going to, we were going to need to find $100,000, but you're talking that you, I know you said that it's not the same quality, but you have some subs who have your bachelors and masters, and if they're not certi, is this accurate, if they're not certificated, they're still getting a low hourly amount, is that correct, Ms. Bassett?
Education and education, that's the...
Okay, so what are your bachelors with no certification, what are they making, your subs?
I think we said that to you, but I wasn't...
You did, I'm sorry, just, no, no, I've got it, I just didn't know if you knew offhand. Okay, I can look it up too, but, and I wanted to just find that 100,000, 99,000 and some change to bring our subs up. I mean, you have many of them only making the 1175, I think it was, per hour, and they have to have at least an associate's, and they're obviously very vital, I mean, every single school we're going to is talking about the importance of their pairs, their subs, these ones who are helping their teachers.
That adds to the budget, not that it's not a good reason, but it does add to the budget.
Right, if we take into consideration those cost savings and the additional 100,000, instead of the 1,855,581, you're looking at around 790, then, that we have to address to balance.
So, we're pretty on, okay, as far as revenues, with the county and the state, that's pretty much not in stone, but all the numbers are there. You said there might be a little bit of more money coming from state aid, you think that could be 100,000?
Correct.
But there's not, that's... And there's S or II money, we'll probably have maybe a million dollars left over after, summer school comes out, it's S or II I'm talking about, we have, we have what, I mean, I'm hearing numbers floating around here.
About a million assigned to summer school, but I can get you that amount.
But we've also spent some of, some other things too.
Actually, it was just for the math workbooks and things like that, it's been put on hold currently, but it, there is allocation that the state approved for, to spend those funds on, but we need to reallocate and do a budget amendment.
Right, so the state approved us to spend all of the dollars, so there were no dollars left.
Understand.
PPE, summer school, all those kinds of things, but we have not, we put a hold on it until you all felt comfortable, so that's why we are, you know, sort of in this predicament, where we really, really, really need to get moving.
When do S or II funds have to be spent by?
23.
23, so, that's to, September 23?
I think it's July.
Fiscal year usually is July.
So, we can spend it in next year, but that's it, one more year, or two more years?
One more year.
So, S or funds?
And then there's an extension for a year if we don't spend it all?
Exactly, it'll go to the end of 23, or till July 1 of 23.
So, if we could find out where some of this S or money could be used?
Right, and that would be the key, we would have to definitely be able to tie it to continuing services related to COVID, that if we were, we saw a decrease in enrollment due to COVID, that these people, potentially 790,000 could be a reduction in force, and S or II could support that since it's a reduction in force.
So, if we could justify that and have it go through, we would have two years to use, I mean, with an extension, that could be, keep us whole for two years before we, the bucket would drop out of us again.
And don't forget, you have S or III coming right behind us.
Yeah, but...
Same purpose.
Understand.
And one thing that I do want to mention too, would be with the S or dollars, you're hearing more and more, and I mentioned about a blueprint coordinator, and it would, or implementation person, so it would be someone that would work jointly with the county and the school system, it could either be a county employee or a school system employee, that there's a solid plan in place, we talked about strategically, maybe even thinking about a committee for the S or II and S or III, as far as what are our strategic goals, how do they align with the process, and this position that we're required to have, or by July 1, would help in facilitating that, and a lot of it would be the programmatic piece of it. Is that your understanding, Dr. Kane?
That is exactly my understanding, in addition to that, the monitoring, because there's a pretty complicated monitoring piece that is going to come along with all of these federal...
So, that would be paid out of S or money, could be paid out of that money?
Yep, it could.
And would be somebody that could coordinate it and make sure that it's being spent according to what the law requires.
Right, and more so like programmatically, in line with our goals and where we see ourselves in the next couple of years, as far as what do we identify as the needs of the district, and how are we going to get there, and what are the measurements to get us there?
I'm just being sitting here plugging the numbers in, just, with that extra 100,000 we talked about, we were down to a deficit of 85,581, with just the scenario we have here in number 12. You talking about the extra 156 going over to blueprint funds, possibly, that would take care of the 85,000 that were short, and we could do what's on this paper. Am I making it too simple?
I mean, to me, it looks like...
Did I simplify it too much, or did I, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm just grasping at straws?
You mean with S or dollars, if we, if we take the tutoring, the tutoring 156 to the blueprint funds, it's a grant, correct?
Correct. You just said there was an extra $100,000 in the state aid.
Correct.
Taking all that money, I'm just going to, you know, pray for 440,000 in building use, we're at 85,000 in the deficit, that 156 wipes that out, do it, leaving this as-is.
I see.
The two positions, the retirement savings.
I think we'll still be 700,000, 800,000 short.
I checked the numbers again, I just, I just did it really quick with just whatever we just talked about just now, and I, maybe I'm oversimplifying it.
No, so, what I did is I took the 1,855,581, the deficit, and I subtracted out the 156, the 40, and then the 100, so that still leaves us 789,000.
So, you've still done, you've already taken that out, and that's what this is?
No, it takes us to a new total of 789,581.
Okay, because that's not reflected on here, that's why I guess I was being too simple.
Right, I was, okay, we identified more savings this week, we were thinking, so instead of that 1,855,581, it takes it down to... it takes it down to 789,581.
How comfortable, and I know you can't answer that right now, do you feel that number, ESTER can fill that gap in pretty heavily? I mean, not just that, you know, through the whole thing of using, you know, reduction in force and things of that nature. Do you think that ESTER could do 500 to 700,000 of that?
My hesitation would be, is what would our long-term goals be, and would it include just supporting salaries, and would it, would there be other needs in the, in the school, and would that be more of something that the committee should identify, and maybe use some of the current fund balance that we have, maybe a mixture of the two?
Mm-hmm.
ESTER and fund balance? Or all of ESTER, but that would be a decision of what the committee would want and what they see for the school system.
I mean, using either fund balance or ESTER money, to me, is one-time money that's digging ourselves a hole. I mean, I'm just trying to look at how, and, you know, we've done this in the past.
And we do have open positions? I'm not sure how many, Ms. Bass, could speak to how many open positions we have.
Yes, I do, open right now. I'm with that.
Last year, we...
There are 34 open positions that are vacant at this point.
But some of them are classroom teachers.
All of these are classroom teachers.
Or special educators.
Or special educators, yes. But they all provide instruction.
So that, that is either going to reduce programs or...
Increase class.
An increased class size.
Yes, absolutely.
That's why I, I think I mentioned an email to some of you, that we may have to look at the budget requests, that we may have to revise at 253,000 if we're already 785 at this point. 785.
Eighty-nine. 789.
Okay.
But when you say we have that number, when you say 30-some?
34.
34. That's out for, I mean, you're interviewing some of those people now, aren't you?
Absolutely.
And at some point, you got to pull the trigger on it, because if you don't pull the trigger soon, you might not get them.
I pull the trigger, I give them 24 hours to have a conversation and get back to me. Usually, the principals have the batter's box, so they have the next up.
So the, I mean, you say we have 32 open positions, but there are 32 that are needed to be filled, 34, I'm sorry.
34, need to be filled.
That, to me, doesn't look like a...
But they're needed by either retirements or people going to other districts, or deciding not to do this work any longer.
And to me, that's not a, personally, a good option, because those are people we need in our, in our, in our system. And, you know, we lost 19 last year, and we're losing two this year in this proposed budget.
Well, those two are not...
But then you talked about...
Sorry, they're not classroom teachers.
They're not teaching, but I mean, you know, everybody has, is doing a job, or if somebody doesn't do their job, somebody else has to fill in to do it. So it's, you know, it's going somewhere.
So I think that what Mrs. Towers is trying to explain is that there really is an opportunity here for us to probably combine the use of some fund balance and the use of some ESTER. We have to certainly justify it, but avoiding layoffs is one of the justifiable, one of the allowable reasons that we could use this money.
And, Ms. Harper, are that 253,160, maybe go back to the person who requested, and see if we could come up with another option? Okay.
So I'm always interested in looking at the impact, right, on schools of not just losing a person, but losing the position. And in some of these cases, as the negotiated agreement is written, because it requires for us to look at teachers who are not tenured, so we look at their tenure in the county, not just in their school, but in the county, and whether or not they have an APC, an Advanced Professional Certificate. Some of the teachers that would fall into a category to be, that position to be reduced, may be the only teacher that teaches that particular content area. And so if we have to cut that position, then we are cutting programs. And what we're proposing is that we not do that at all, and still allow that 253,000 that you've already approved, but use fund balance and ESTER funds to bridge the gap. Everybody stays where they are, and we use the resources that are available to us to keep things as they are.
And the way I see it, the way this year has gone, our students need this. We can't afford to be without teachers, lose programs, and close the gap on what they've lost this year.
I, I, you won't get an argument out of me on that. You know, it's just what we propose as this budget, we all got to make sure, and we're all going to be here next year, that, you know, this is going to be an ongoing problem.
Yep.
You know, it's not like, you know, it's, because everything increases, and everybody wants more pay, and everybody wants to move on, but, you know, we're, you know, we're taking resources from one-time places that aren't getting renewed. Even though ESTER money is good for a couple of years, our fund balance, we could maybe hopefully improve every year, but it comes to an end. You know, any well goes dry. But what I suggest is, can, you know, look at this ESTER thing, and really find out what money can be used there, and how you can implement that into that program. We've got a better fund balance than we did last year, but I think we're in a, we all must agree that it's a different year to get that fund balance. Some of these things are, I don't anticipate doing next year. And I think we should schedule a meeting on 9th of June for another budget hearing to wrap this up. Because we, you know, we got to balance it, we got to have a budget by the end of the school year. That's my take. Any other members?
Do we have a proposal to look at with the mixture of the two tonight?
No.
No.
But we know what the gap is.
Yeah.
We know the gap is about 700, 800,000, and we're able to make that work between fund balance and ESTER dollars.
Would there be a preference 50/50, or all in one, or...
I'd like to see 50/50. Especially if it means we don't have to go through this and chop things we desperately need already, because previous years, we keep chopping it.
You know, one thing, we do 50, that's fine. I'm just going to pick a round number of 400,000 of each. That will then up our fund balance use this year for 730,000, because we're already, we're into it for 330.
So, Ms. Towers, would you explain how, because we have netted really a savings of over a million dollars, yes, that 330 comes off, but it's not like we are digging for something, it's already there, because the fund balance is...
Oh, I understand.
We've increased our fund balance over the last four years.
We have, and it's there, but you just, I just, in my mind, using fund balance as to pay a reoccurring cost on the operating budget, to me, is not good practice.
It absolutely is not. And I think this district has been doing it for a long, long time.
And you and I have talked about that, I agree, when you came here, you were shocked that that was...
I've never heard of such a thing.
But I can't remember ever a year where we've ever gotten enough money right off the bat to do what we need to do, ever.
Because you are living in a wealthy county that does not put an equitable amount into the school system.
Well, it's...
It's the greatest amount, because you're the greatest, you're the biggest employer. But the value for education in terms of funding has to be there. If it were, you would not, because you're in a wealthy county, it wouldn't be this.
Well, we're in a wealthy...
If you get the minimum every year, this is what happens.
Well, they, I take some offense to that. I find that county does a lot for the school system. We have a good system, they put a lot of money into it, they put a lot more money in in most counties, only because they're wealthier. But, you know, there comes a point, how much anybody can afford, and, you know, we don't, we don't set the tax rate, and...
Mr. Smith, if you watched the budget meeting, where Dr. Kane was, and I were the only two people that spoke to the county commissioners, the school system used to be 51% of the budget. It is now 40% in this, this current proposed budget, 40%. That is a huge decrease.
It is, but they also...
And you can't, you can't defend it, you can't...
The numbers don't lie.
And the numbers don't lie.
That's what they're paying us, but I can defend it, there's other things they have to provide with this county.
There's no doubt.
Department of Commerce and Services, this county's getting older, there's, there's a different requirement and different priorities that these gentlemen have to deal with.
I'm not asking you to defend any of it, sir, I'm just stating a fact.
It's a fact.
Because as the school board and the superintendent, our priority is advocating for our employees, and that's what we have to do.
And this school system has always done an excellent job with what we've got, but that can't continue if you keep chopping away and chopping away and chopping away. Eventually, and very soon, our rates are going to start dropping.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. I think it's our job to make this thing work. So if you have a, some kind of plan, the fund balance, combination of fund balance and ESTER money, I would recommend we get those proposals in front of us, so we can possibly do a budget. I mean, we've got June the 9th, and we got June the 16th, so we got two other meetings, but I think we definitely should schedule a budget heater for the 9th to move us up. So, you know, if we need anything, we're not going to be, I don't want to be at the last minute saying we got to do something, and not make sure we're all on the same page, if everybody can agree to that.
Sure. Last year, remember, we, we were here several nights, long nights, and we had three different scenarios up on the, on the board, and we, and we worked it out. I mean, it...
Well, I think, I think...
We had to do, we had to do.
As soon as Jane can get us this information, we can look at it, we got the way to get back to both, anybody that wants to contact through our system as far as questions, and, you know, we can get back. But we, you know, but to me, it looks like we're looking at about 800,000 in that neighborhood to come up with additional revenue, if we're going to keep our system the same as it is right now, or what we're proposing.
Balance, yes. But what I can do is provide you the ESTER II proposal, the updated amount showing that 400,000 decrease.
And I'd like to see, also, I'm looking at more than one year, too, because, you know, what we do this year is going to affect next year, because when we start taking one-time money, we got to make sure, I want a plan to work at least two or three years, hopefully. I only go so far out, but want to make sure we have enough, you know, to make sure this works for a couple of years.
And you're also going to show us where the summer school salaries come out of the...
Yes, we'll provide updated...
Okay, thank you. And the novels and the...
Yes.
The workbooks? Okay, thank you.
And I thought each month going forward, in addition to the revenue and expenditure reports, that I'll have an ESTER report, then there's two as well to review each month going forward. That's helpful.
Okay. Okay, is any other questions for Jane or Dr. Kane? Jane, you have anything else for us? Dr. Kane, you?
Nope.
Any board members?
No, other than the substitutes, I'm not sure if we can add that. The fund's intuitive, or you've been interested in doing that. And June 9th won't work for me, but I'm certainly, I can give my opinion, my...
Okay, hearing nothing, this, and this budget workshop, we do have our regular school board meeting on June the 2nd of this next month. We will schedule another workshop on June the 9th, budget, and we have our regular work session on June the 16th of June. Are there any other information the board would like to bring up for this evening's meeting? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, all is a favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, so have it.
Thanks, everybody.